Evans.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ready? Burkhart.
Here.
I want to welcome everyone that we have in the audience this evening. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up to address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Lieutenant Jensen, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Sorry?
Captain Jensen.
Captain Jensen.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we're going to be removing Item 7 on non-consent, Item D. That's the Consider Possible Action related to closed session.
Is there any other changes to the Agenda Council? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of Item 7D?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Public Communications, Item 3B. We have a presentation from Amanda Wonke, the CEO of Dart.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. I am Amanda Wonke, and I'm the CEO at Dart. And I have been in this role just about a year now, and so wanted to bring you an update because there are a lot of things happening. But first, I always want to start with a thank you for your service. I know that you have a lot to balance in your community and appreciate your membership in Dart, and especially a big thanks to Mayor Derenfeld and your city manager for all that has gone into time and effort that has gone into Dart this year. We really appreciate your membership, and I hope if there's something you will see and hear through this presentation, it's that we want to be the most efficient and effective stewards of your taxpayer dollars that we can. And so I'll be sharing just a little bit with you about what's happening at Dart and some of the ridership and numbers related to you.
And Amanda?
Yes.
We want to acknowledge Councilman Ready's involvement as well as the alternate.
Oh, yes.
He's on online tonight.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't catch that. Councilman Ready, yes, as well. Thank you so much for your time as well. Greatly appreciate it. So what you'll see on the first slide here that is important to know is that Dart and public transit are an economic driver. We provided more than 3.5 million trips last year, and nine out of 10 of those trips are to make or earn money. On the next slide, you'll see that not only is it an economic driver, it's essential for social equity and community well-being. You can see here on the bottom, who uses Dart? That the majority of our riders, more than 90%, live in households that make $50,000 or less, and the majority also do not have a car or a driver's license. So these are really families that are dependent on public transit to get where they need to go. In addition, as we look forward as a region, we know that a lot of our competitors, when we look from Omaha to Columbus to Rochester, Minnesota, to Iowa City, there are lots of cities investing and regions investing in public transit, and we just know we need to keep that eye from a competition standpoint. And they are doing it because they look at transit as key to getting people to work, getting people to appointments, and getting people to education that make their community a better place. So let's talk a little bit about your services in Johnston. So you have a few key routes in Johnston. The local Route 5 is a seven-day-a-week route. The express route 93 is focused on the peak commuter routes in the morning and evening, and that runs during weekdays. And then paratransit service is the service for those who are unable to use fixed route to get where they need to go. This is a door-to-door service for those who qualify for that. In addition, we have van pooling services that connect workers and employers within the Dart region outside into rural Iowa and back. In addition, there is also special event service and emergency services and other things we contribute to as well. So let's talk a little bit about your ridership, because ridership in Johnston has trended up the last few years. And if you look at FY '24, there were 10,000, just over 10,000 fixed route boardings. And one of the questions we often get is, how many people is that? The answer is, I don't know, just like when someone's walking into a park or into somewhere else, we don't always know who they are. We know they're getting on a bus, and we know they're getting off a bus, and it's 10,000, 10,000 times in FY '24 and continuing to increase. Paratransit steadied out this last year at about 8,000 trips. One thing to note about these trips, and we've really seen this in conversations with the commission lately, is that paratransit trips are really essential from a regional perspective. We do know, because these are door-to-door and people have to apply for this service, we do know who these folks are. We know that 44 are residents of your community, and the other 150-some are using the service to come into your community to work or get to appointments or go shopping. And you can see here what some of those key locations are. And you can also read a quote from one of your residents who uses and relies on Dart to get to work in the eastern side of our suburbs. We do know that there is always, you know, as an organization, there's always feedback, and we have heard lots of feedback over the years. And one have done a lot, the commission has really done a lot, in order to respond to that. So everything from reconstituting our governance in 2017 to ensure that every member community had a seat at the table, to adopting a new property tax formula that we are halfway through the implementation of, to piloting smaller buses, trying pilots of new types of services, we really are trying to make sure that we're being innovative and responsive to what we are hearing in our community. So let's talk a little bit about that property tax formula. What you can see here is how the formula works. So between our suburbs, the 50.8% that is left of property tax revenue, it is based, what a community pays is based part, half on population and half on the level of service you get. You can see that currently Johnston is in Tier 4, and since the implementation of this property tax formula, your residence rates have gone down nearly five cents. So a $200,000 homeowner would pay about $60 a year to contribute to Dart's services. One thing to note is that the Route 5 currently has weekend service on it. You'll note that right now, Johnston is in Tier 4. Technically, seven-day-a-week service would move you into Tier 3. However, this was funded through a grant, and the commission has decided to wait on conversations about tiers as part of Reimagine Dart, which I'll be talking about in a minute. And so that'll be something we revisit, but I just wanted to note that as your community is a community that now has seven-day-a-week service. I also want to make sure again that you know that we are committed to making sure that we're efficient and effective with every taxpayer dollar we get. We look very carefully at other transit agencies throughout our country and compare ourselves to them. This is one of those metrics. This is operating cost per vehicle mile, and you can see that we are well below the national average of $12.10 at about $8.52. Again, the point here, there are tons of other metrics like this. In addition, this last year, knowing and understanding the situation we are all in with challenges to our property tax revenue, we have cut $1 million in administrative expenses where we could as well. Those do come as an impact to the customer. We've cut things like customer service hours, Wi-Fi onboard our buses, and a few support positions. That said, we were able to make these cuts without reducing service this last year, which we were thankful for. Again, hearing from all of you and your residents is really important to us. Thank you to each of you who filled out the Dart survey earlier this year. And again, thank you to your commissioner, alternate, city manager who participated in further workshops and conversations. We have heard that there is alignment in our community that transit is essential. We all believe transit is essential. You all said that. We also heard there's a lot of discussion about funding fatigue, and we're all facing a lot of economic pressures. And so how you address those challenges and opportunities is where there isn't so much alignment. So you can see on the next slide that this was a slide where we asked about the type of system. Essentially, it lays out three different general types of transit systems we wanted in our region, and you can see that it was almost equally divided between all three types of services. And so this is where we are working with Reimagine Dart to try and get to that regional consensus. Something I have heard since I came on as CEO and had this opportunity is that there is not that consensus, and I know with that that we can't be everything to everybody. And this is why we are launching the effort of Reimagine Dart, which is really all about, first, getting the buy-in around shared goals. So the commission has been having some workshop on shared goals, and we'll continue these conversations early in 2025. Right now, the goals that are rising to the top are economic impact, social equity, and ensuring that each community is getting a return on investment that is good for that community as well. So those are three that are rising to the top. And then after we take those, we will also, we are also now going out for and beginning a whole public transit system redesign. I could talk about that for a long time, but I know you're short on time. And we are also with that redesign, looking at a lot of other alternatives as well. Where is fixed route the best option? Where is microtransit the best option? Where could we pilot different types of services? We currently have Dart-on-demand microtransit in Ankeny, and that's working fairly well there. We have a Flex Connect pilot working with Uber and our yellow taxis. So again, want to try all different types of services because we know our region is not the same across the region, so we want to ensure we're delivering the right service in the right place. And this work will look at that. And the commission will need to, after several rounds of public input, choose and focus on a new system design by December of 2025, so just about a year from now, in order to begin implementation in line with the beginning of our fiscal year 27 budget. So appreciate continued involvement and effort in that. You and your residents' voices at the table will be really important to making sure we're meeting Johnston's needs. Again, the growing ridership shows that there's demand in the community, and we want to make sure we're looking at that and meeting your community's needs well, and again, delivering efficient services. So again, thank you for your time. Thank you for your membership in Dart, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Councilmembers, have any questions for Amanda?
Mayor, one. And I need to apologize, but I want to give you a little preface. I teach in my day job at Des Moines Area Community College, so I'm very appreciative for all the services you provide to DMAC students and making sure they get to my class and many other classes. They're probably not as thankful. But I mean, what that leads to, though, is I have heard anecdotally occasions where buses are canceled or stops are canceled, and you don't need to give it tonight, but at some point, I would be interested in knowing the dedicated route within or routes within Johnston, how often are those stops delayed to the point of cancellation? So if you could look into that?
Yes.
I'd be curious. And then certainly, you know, I'm all ears as to how we can continue to increase that ridership. Obviously, it's, I'm enthused by 42% increase two years ago or a year and a half ago, but how can we continue to serve our residents even better? And the businesses, for that matter, too, who benefit from that.
Absolutely. And I will follow up with the details related to your questions. On-time performance and ensuring there aren't missed trips are one of our top priorities this year as an organization. There can be a variety of things, from construction to detours to sometimes manpower issues that come up in the spur of the moment. But again, we have been meeting the majority of our trips, so I'll get numbers for Johnston. It is not something that should be too frequent, but it does occasionally happen, just like with any other transportation. But we do our best to keep it on time and everybody showing up, but we'll get you details on that. And then, yes, especially awareness to local businesses, especially those along Merle Hay in 86 where we have service. If there's anything, Mayor Derenfeld spoke to the chamber recently. We're always trying to make businesses aware of this as an option. We also have an unlimited access program, which is what DMAC is, where DMAC is essentially paying the fares for their students to make it easier for them to use Dart. So there's lots of ways to get people involved, but really, the most important thing to ridership is having the right service at the right time at the right place. And that's where all the information and work in Reimagine Dart will be important.
Are there ways, and perhaps I'm just putting the cart before the horse for that re-envisioned and re-imaged Dart, where potentially some of those special routes could include Johnston and some of our activities? You know, obviously, we're all probably familiar with special routes to the fairgrounds or other things like that at special times. You know, we're beginning more and more to draw crowds at certain events and at certain times, and therefore parking becomes an issue. But if we can continue to utilize services of our partner, I think that may be a win-win, not only to get even more folks here, but also keep our traffic density down in the general area, but also give folks in this area who maybe don't experienced or haven't experienced Dart transport anytime recently, the opportunity to do so and to realize how beneficial it can be for them in that capacity. So whatever you can do to reach out to our community to try to provide those services or allow us to explore that, that would be awesome.
Yes, and we will definitely explore that. That special event service and how we can do more of that is something we are looking into as part of Reimagine Dart. Just so you know, there have historically been quite a few federal regulations around what we can and can't do in that area. But we, again, I wholeheartedly agree that it is really important in terms of opening up new people to using public transit and helping where there's congestion and parking. And so between changes in the administration as well as this effort, we'll continue to keep an eye on where we might be able to make some changes to better meet those special events.
Fantastic.
So I won't promise, but we will definitely be looking at it.
I appreciate it.
Yes.
Councilmember Burkhart, just to piggyback on what you've just suggested, you know, Amanda and the Dart staff have heard me say several times that I think that as we continue to make improvements along Merle Hay Road with, you know, the new businesses and what's being proposed, the demand for, the need for Dart service is only going to increase. And so in addition to all of those new businesses we see developing along here, we are having more and more special event-type of things. And so that's something that we can continue to have conversation around. So I just want to say, Amanda, you know, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for the update, and thank you for the great, great job that you're doing at Dart. Amanda came back to Dart at a very challenging time, and it's not, it's not just a challenging time for the transportation system that we have here in the metro area, but it is across the country. And so, you know, we've got some big challenges. Hopefully, we'll be able to work through some of the issues with Reimagine Dart, but I'm confident that with Amanda at the helm, we'll give it our best shot and do the best we can. So again, thank you. Thank you for everything that you do, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mayor, is it still time for questions or not?
Sure.
Okay.
So I'll just have to do the wrap-up again.
Well, I'm sorry. I felt like it was a wrap-up, but I wanted to get a question. So first of all, thank you, Amanda, and I do want to echo, I think, the mayor's comments. And I also want to acknowledge the mayor's work and dedication to the Dart Board. You've been a long time.
I think maybe like 15 years.
Worked for a long time. I once, I, for a short time, played the role of Shresh, of being the alternate to the mayor on a Dart Board, which is a little bit like being the Maytag Pear Man, because the mayor is always at those meetings, and so we're rarely called upon as an alter, but it was still a great opportunity to learn about Dart. I mean, I do have just one question about the property tax formula sheet on your spreadsheet about how that kind of works, because you kind of talked a little bit about Tier 4 versus Tier 3. So if, at some point, Johnston, because of the seven-day service, became a Tier 3, how does that formula change? How does that work?
Yep. So essentially, again, 50% of what the community pays, and this is where it gets really complicated, but we look at all local tax revenue, right? So we have the property tax, and now the city of Des Moines has the option for the franchise fee. So all of that, what's the total revenue we need? And then it goes through the formula. And right now, I will say we are half in the old formula and half in the new formula. This is the new formula. In the old formula, every community went up the same. And so no matter where you were and how much service you got, your property tax levy went up the same amount to meet those needs. So now it'll go through the formula, and FY '29 is when we're completely on this new formula. The first 49.2% comes off the top for the city of Des Moines, and then the remaining 50.8% is shared between all of the remaining suburbs. Again, it's based half on that population and half on that tier. So essentially, of that 50% of the 49.2, 50.8, that you would add an additional like 15%. And we can run these models. Again, part of this is, we have not had a community change tiers since this was done. And this is why we want to look at this as we relook at the system as a whole and ensure this is going to be the best way to do it, because we also don't want to disincentivize communities for having more transit. But again, it's also that return on value. The more miles and service we have in a community, the more it costs to run. So right now, essentially, there would be a choice to move to a Tier 3, and you would take on an additional 15% of that amount because you'd shift tiers.
Okay. So that, is it almost like a 30% going from the 15 to the additional 15 or?
Well, and see, actually, it's a combination of the total. So if you see all of those tiers under there, add up to 100%. And so what the tiers do is they build on top of each other. And so you would be going from Tier 4 to Tier 3, so you'd add an additional 15% of that percent. It is extremely complicated. It is one of the things, I will say, as staff, we are continuing to look for ways to try and simplify and explain the implementation of this. We can run numbers through the formula where we actually say, okay, here's what it would mean for your community, and that's probably more what we'd need than talking in these random percentages. So we will certainly get to that at the point that we're having any conversations about moving tiers or changing tiers. And if you wanted to know, we can always run it through the formulas.
Well, and I think, you know, and Councilman Burkhart made a, I think, highlighted the most important point was ridership increases and ridership. That's really, frankly, the most important item to be highlighting and feel really good about, right? I mean, we, COVID obviously had a huge impact on lots of things, but public transit especially. And, you know, as you talk to different people who are kind of, they're starting to feel like, well, we're, now we're far enough away from 2020 that we're starting to get back to kind of a normal period, and clearly, your ridership numbers are reflecting that too. So anyway, thank you again. Thank you for your leadership. It is greatly appreciated.
You, and I'll follow up with some of the information you requested. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Amanda. We are still under Public Communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Is there anybody online, Cindy? Okay, we'll move on then to public hearings, and we have three public hearings this evening. The first one is to conduct a public hearing and consider Resolution Number 24-302, determining an area of the city to be an economic development and blighted area, and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development or combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects, and adopting the Amendment Number 14 to the Johnston East Central Tiff Urban Renewal Plan. We'll open this public hearing at 7:35. Josh?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't have the notes. Oh, here we go. Thank you, Cindy. This would, as the mayor mentioned, this would be, this is a consideration for amending, Amendment Number 14 to the East Central Urban Renewal Area. This amendment does not amend the area, but it amends the plan. The amendments would be allowing for incentivizing economic development activities and projects, and also allowing for expenses and investments related to the Economic Development Guide that we look to do in fiscal year 2026. We did hold a consultation meeting that the Johnston Community School District and Polk County were invited to. No representatives were in attendance for that consultation meeting, and also staff did not receive any public comment prior to council relating to this public notice.
Councilmembers, have any questions? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this? Seeing none. With that, we will close the public hearing at 7:36. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-302?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4B, conduct a public hearing on proposed acquisition of property by eminent domain, Northwest Annexation Water Main Extensions Project, Resolution Number 24-308, authorizing acquisition of property by eminent domain. We will open this public hearing at 7:37. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This evening, we're looking at the need for constructions of segments B and C of the water main improvements for the northwest growth area. There are several moving parts to the northwest growth area with development interest increasing. There is a need to extend water and sewer infrastructure to the area. Tonight's focus is really on the Water Main Project, which will serve the newest potential growth area in Johnston. Up on the TV here or on the screen is kind of the routes, looking at B and C. C is shaded in green along Beaver Drive. It'll go up to Sailorville Drive and then turn kind of southwesterly and run down Sailorville Drive partway, to then which Segment B picks up and then runs down northwest, 110th Court to the south, on through Camp Dodge, across to private parcel, and then to Towner Drive. Tonight, we're looking specifically at the MBD Enterprise Parcel. You click on the second attachment, the second from the bottom? That's shown here on the screen as well. On the MBD Enterprise Parcel, the city needs to convert 15 feet of the permanent easement to a water main easement. That's the blue-shaded area on the map. That entire parcel is actually currently in a 40-foot-wide sanitary sewer easement, so that 15 feet easement would fall within the already encumbered 40-foot sanitary sewer easement. Along with that, we need to acquire a temporary easement, which is the yellow-shaded area. It's approximately 194 feet by 50 feet. This will help aid in the installation of the water main during construction and give the construction crews room to work and maneuver in that area. The engineer and staff continue to engage with the property owners to continue negotiations to find an amicable resolution. Staff would like to proceed with this process and run parallel tracks in case an agreement can't be reached. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Also, the project engineer, Josh DeBauer with FOTH, is in attendance with us, as well as the owner is in attendance tonight in the audience and may wish to address the council as well.
Does the council have any questions for Matt?
And if I could clarify one item, the resolution doesn't specify this is segments B and C, but we will tweak that. The, this does not relate to Segment A of the Water Main Project. So just for everybody's understanding, we're only moving forward with B and C tonight.
Will that need to be a proposed amendment to the resolution?
Yes, just clarify that it's Northwest Annexation Water Main Project, Segment B and C.
Matt, I'm having a hard time finding this on the larger map. Can you pull up a larger map and put that into the?
That would work too, I guess.
Yeah, it's right at the intersection of northwest 110th and Road Drive, just south of that intersection.
Okay, I understand it now. North is to the left.
Yeah, on the actual parcel display.
Okay.
Camp Dodge, just to the south one.
Are there other questions for Matt?
I have one, Mayor. Matt, you had indicated that the green area was a sanitary easement existing that was 40 feet, and then it appears, at least if the scale is correct, that once that heads north, it gets narrower to 20 or so. Is that because, is there a portion of that easement that actually is on the other side of that property line?
No, it's a great question. No, the easement does narrow down as it turns and runs to the north.
And if you could, in layman's terms, or even dumber than that for me, why can we go from 40 feet to 20 feet?
Go ahead.
So it has to do with the profile of the force main. This is that section of force main from your Segment B lift station pumping it to the segment of gravity. main from your Segment B lift station pumping it to the segment of gravity. So as we are coming along the western property line, we are able to be closer to five and a half feet deep. So we only need 20 feet. And then once we go farther south, due to the profile to get underneath Beaver Creek before we launch back up, we need to be deeper. So it had to be wider.
Wonderful. Even I understood that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt or Josh? Seeing none. This is a public hearing on this item. I'll first ask the applicant if he, and I don't know who it is, if he has any comments? Absolutely. Just give us your name and address.
Doyle, and I live at 7349 Northwest Sixth Drive in Ankeny. And my wife and I purchased this property from Dean Corrick, Johnston Wildlife Estates. So, and I'll be honest, we were not aware of any of this project. When we bought it, we were not disclosed any of it. We knew there was an easement through there, but not to the extent of this. And we spent $385,000 on this property. And, and I've talked to these guys and, you know, and I do object to some of the water main and things. And to make a long story short, some of the back part is in a floodplain. We've tried to get a grading permit for it. They said yes. Now the county says no. And it's not, that doesn't really have anything to do with you guys. It's just frustrating for us as, you know, purchasing the property and the amount of money we've already invested in it and with the engineers and the site plans and the grading contracts and everything like that. You know, and they want to come in and, and I understand progress has its, you know, demons. And, you know, they want to clear out a 40-foot path in my timber, not, not, there's no discussion on that, you know. And then they want another 50 by 200 feet in the back and tearing out all my trees that we paid good money for. And it just diminishes the property value. And I know we want to, we're going to end up having to sell it just for the fact of there's a section of it. We can't get approved for the grading permit for, you know, for the outbuilding we want to put there. But, you know, I've, I've tried to work this out in different, a lot of different scenarios and the amount of filled dirt you put in there. It has to be a certain depth and all that good stuff. But, and so I guess my, my, we would like to prolong this as long as we can so that whoever does buy it can at least see the value of what it could be before, before it all gets torn out and takes the property value from what it was to what it will be. Does that make sense? So it's?
You mean you want to delay the prop, delay the work?
A little bit. That's, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, but you got to look at it from my point of view too. And who the hell wants to buy a property like this when it's all tore up and trees are everywhere? And you made a good point about 20-foot wide. How are you going to get excavators down a 20-foot wide path and not touch the rest of my property? Where are you going to put the dirt? Where are you going to put the tailings? Where are you going to put the trees? And I could go on a list on and on and on of what it, you, you take an excavator, dump trucks, do 20-foot wide path. And if you looked at the grade, if you went out and looked at the property, you can't stay in that. They want to tell you you can, but you can't. I mean, my friends from Hebrew Grading would tell you different, you know. And even the 40-foot wide before branches off, to do the amount of work and dig a 20, 30-foot trench, however deep it has to be, it's going to go way past the 40-foot easement. And I'm the one that suffers from it, nobody else. If I would have known this prior to everything on the property, I would have not bought it. I've even asked if the city would buy it from me. Put the lift station that's up in the corner, put it on mine. You know, we're trying to get Camp Dodge, work something out with them, see if they'll buy it. So I'm just in a bit of a pickle. And as far as right now, I object to it.
You've, I know you've had a lot of conversation with staff.
I have.
For what's being proposed.
I have, and it's.
Yeah. And, and I'll ask Matt to respond to your, your request to delay it and just so that we have a sense of what, what a delay would, would do. But what, what is your, what is your suggestion in terms of how long that delay would need to be?
I know that answer. I wish I did. Thank you.
We do have, a delay would mean that we wouldn't be able to meet some of our obligations with development agreements and to service that area that we're under an agreement with Xenia to, to provide service up in that area. But we've got a couple of different factors if we delayed the project.
What is our timeline, Matt?
Our, our timeline is we're looking at bidding this project out here in early spring, around March, April timeframe to get construction started yet this year to be completed by the end of the year of 2025. That's the timeframe for, for the project, for segments B and C.
So if this, if this resolution is approved tonight, I assume the conversations are going to continue with Mr. Doyle. And what do we hope to accomplish?
Yeah, we hope to.
Further conversation?
To come to a resol, to, to come to a resolution that, that serves both parties. I mean, allows us to have access through there and makes him whole. So we'll continue that, but we just need to run a parallel track so that in case we can't come to that agreement, we can meet our obligations.
So the goal is still trying?
Oh, yeah. We, we would prefer to, to do that and not even have to go down this path. So that's always our goal when we have these proceedings, is to continue to work towards that.
Just, and I know because we have had an opportunity to visit about this before, roughly how many meetings have you had with the property owner and throughout this process?
Meetings, we've, we've really only had one face-to-face meeting. We've probably had, I would say, four, five phone calls between. We were dealing with the previous property owner, and then the Doyles bought this property. So it's kind of come in on the tail end where we've started working through this process.
And so you, you mean, and Mr. Doyle, would it be fair to say that you believe that the lines of communication between city staff and yourself are open and, and good?
They are.
Good, okay. Well, that I think, and I, that. Yeah. I mean, I think that would be, you know, we would prefer to come to some sort of resolution as well. It's a challenging when. Well, you had an opportunity to give us a deadline and you, yeah. I, I think everybody has that same objective, and they think that we have a much deeper, bigger checkbook than we really do. And we, and really, and we're limited as well by, by, there's lots of limitations. So anyway, I mean, I, I think, I'm glad to hear that the lines of communication are open. That's typically how we try to work is to, to work to find some sort of resolution. And I, and hopefully we can, can do that in this case. But if we're not, obviously, I think this is a route we also have to pursue too, so.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council?
Mayor and members of the council, Dan Manning, 505 Fifth Avenue, Suite 1005, Lilis Law Firm, representing Jerry and Helen Oliver. And they're the owners of property at 8199 Northwest 114th Street. And their address, they're in unincorporated Polk County, but, and their address is Grimes. But they're, the western boundary of their property, a but's a significant portion, significant portion of what would be Segment A under the proposed Water Main Extension Project. I'm here to, on, I have submitted a letter on their behalf, and it addresses both 4B and 4C on your agenda this evening. And as I think Mr. Doyle's comments about the, the trees and so forth, and it dovetails with item 4C. But I think it's important that we, that we point out that the environmental information document that is part of this project, and it applies to both B and C. So I see it as a part of this specific project as well. There's no mention, no reference of any kind under the environmental analysis about the impact that this project has on the trees, that both on Mr. Doyle's property, but it's, it's, what we see with Segment B and Segment C is critically important to ultimately what's done on Segment A. And that's why we're, I stand before you tonight to visit with you about, about this item. And I guess, Your Honor, I would ask first that the, the letter that we provided be received, filed, and made a part of the record as it relates to 4B and 4C. And the, the issue really is, if you look at the alignment of, of B and Segment B and Segment C, the vast majority of the property of the alignment is put in the roadway right of way. And that's consistent with Iowa law. That's consistent with Code Section 306.46. It's consistent with the Iowa Supreme Court decision that came down in January of 2023. And what we're really talking about, and that if you look at, you know, Segment C, that's along Northwest Beaver Drive. And then we have Highway 415, which is a state highway, still within the right of way. And, and then down 110th Court, and it's only in that portion where there isn't any right of way where you're getting into the issue with the trees that, you know, Mr. Doyle has visited with you about. And that's really relevant because we, and again, we've had numerous conversations with city staff. The mayor's been involved. We appreciate the involvement of the city. But this is critically important to the Oliver family in that there is an opportunity to put the alignment for A in the Highway 141 right of way. That's why we're here tonight. And that's why we're, we're speaking you, to you tonight. And we intend to speak on item 4, 4C as well. But the, the primary issue here is that there's an opportunity for these kinds of situations where we can keep the minimum amount of land necessary to be taken for a public project by utilizing the right of way. The scheduled Segment A, the property, the western boundary of the Oliver property has a huge canopy of trees. Huge number of trees are going to be taken if this easement is placed on their property. So you're going to have many of the same arguments that Mr. Doyle has, and a significant damage to their property that can be avoided by the city if the alignment is simply changed so that we can have, you know, the, the alignment of the easement within the right of way. Now, we've also, along with our letter, submitted two letters, one from the American Society of Landscape Architects, one from Trees Forever, who've been consulted and want to literally just kind of put their ore in the water here to be, to emphasize the importance of, of addressing, you know, the, there are a number of environmental issues. And we're surprised that there's no mention in the environmental information document about the trees for Mr. Doyle. It could be that, as I'm understanding tonight, that you need to amend your resolution to address just B and C. But we can't state it enough how important it is to Segment A, that this, that the council make a determination when it's time to make that determination, that this be placed in the Highway 141 right of way. We've had numerous meetings with the city about this issue. We're not, I guess the, the question is, we, we want to make sure that you understand that we want to keep the line of communication open, but we're, our emphasis is that the law supports keeping it in the right of way. You've recognized it by your alignment under both B and C to utilize the right of way. And we've asked you to make sure that you utilize the right of way when it's time for you to construct Segment A. And I have any other questions or comments that anyone might have. I can go into more detail, but I, I presume that that more detail would come up under 4C as it relates to the environmental information document itself.
I'm looking at council. The comments that Mr. Manning just made about the alignment of the right of way as it relates to Segment A, that's not before us this evening.
There will be another public hearing before the council formally approves the alignment of Segment A. The resolution tonight for this public hearing is just addressing Segment B and C. But I understand his letter addresses kind of all three, so it's fine to receive it for this public hearing as well as the next public hearing.
Okay, but that, that issue really isn't before us this evening.
Right. There will be another public hearing, which his clients will receive notice of when the council's ready to approve that specific alignment. Correct.
And so, Mr. Manning, on this specific item, whatever, 4B, you're, you're making the argument that because in segments B and C, we're using the right of way, that we should, that that should, that's what we should do for Segment A as well?
Right. And that's correct, Your Honor. And the, and I think what's, what's clearly relevant is you, is you look at Segment C, it consists of both Northwest Beaver Drive and also State Highway 415, 415. So obviously, the city has made, we know, you know, that the Highway 415 is controlled by, by the Iowa Department of Transportation. So we understand that that certainly has, there's been discussion, there's been a commitment. And what, what we want to be clear about is that the same, the same jurisdictional authority would apply for Segment A. That's why we're here, to bring it up, be clear about it, looking for consistency, and also recognizing the impact, the environmental impact of the loss of trees. And the last thing I'll say, because I think I forgot to mention it, we understand that, you know, sometimes you have to take trees out to put in something like a water main. We're not foolish enough to try to tell you, you can't do it. We're not, we wouldn't try to suggest that. But there's a mitigation factor. There's a, Mr. Doyle touched on it. You have a 20-foot swath. I don't know how wide it's actually going to be, but you have construction easements. There's areas, trees can be replaced in certain portions of that area. They're not even addressed in the environmental analysis. We think that's a mistake, and, and we want to point it out to the city.
Do you intend to make comments when we get to 4C as well on the environmental information?
Yes, Your Honor, but it would be.
I think, I think it's important that you do that because that's the information we'll be taking back to the Department of Natural Resources then.
Okay, very good.
So on the Segment A right of way issue, I mean, that's something that we'll be talking about at a different time. And I think, and again, I don't want to get into a debate about it tonight, but I think the DOT looks at 141 differently than they do the roadways that we're dealing with for Segment B and C. And that's part of the issue that we're dealing with there.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you. Matt, anything additionally to, to respond? Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council under item 4B? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing then at eight o'clock. Counsel, do we have a motion on resolution number 24-308? Whoops. Just did.
I would like to make some comments first.
Well, okay.
Either that or a motion. Typically, we. Well, in some of my comments, we're going to be addressed to the engineer. But if you want to, if you want a motion first.
I'm, do you think your comments will, will be in, to change or limit the scope of the motion? Because it, okay.
I think it has to do with clarifying something.
Okay. Are you okay if we go ahead with the motion?
Go ahead.
Okay. And I just want to make sure, kind of to Christine's comment about an amendment. So as I see it, Christine, I presume you're talking about in that first whereas the city council project known as Northwest Annexation Water Main Extension Project, comma, Segment B and C?
Correct. The project name just needs to clarify that it's segments B and C. And so we can, we will. so we can, we will revise the resolution accordingly with your motion.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 24-308 with an amendment to the first whereas, adding after the word project, segments B and C.
And there are additional references to the project within the resolution, so we would just ask that all, all the project references be revised?
All references to the project, add the phrase, subject, segments B and C, following the word project.
Thank you.
Second then.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
Mayor, I would like to have an opportunity to have some discussion. I appreciate both homeowners that came tonight and discussed the importance of their property and the trees on it. I think that, I'm hoping that people realize how important our environment, clean water, clean soils, trees, trees do a tremendous amount of things for our environment. They collect pollution off 141, they're habitat for vital bird species, mammals, pollinator species, without pollinators, we wouldn't have food. They control stormwater runoff, they, they're just, they're so much more than just aesthetic, and they've also have quite a long life. Here in Johnston, we do appreciate trees. I'm probably one of the ones that complain the most about losing trees, and it is always unfortunate. Johnston is a great place to live, and people want to live here, and they want to build their homes here with their second buildings, and, and, and it's tough because the bits of land that we have remaining, a lot of them are very steeply sloped or, or forested. And you have to deal with people who want to occupy that land and then plant back, but in the meantime, we lose all that good soil, our soil gets compacted, we lose our trees, et cetera. So my point of all of this is it, it's tough being up here and trying to think about the good of the city of Johnston, and in this case, getting a water line in, and what we have to do to get that in. I do know that Mike Greiner, our engineer, worked really hard on alignments to as best as possible to avoid these wooded areas, and I believe that the conflict that is coming up is not because we don't appreciate trees, because we do. And we would like to be in these easier-to-build areas because it would be cheaper for our construction, the city's construction. The issue comes down to how, how to stress the issue with the Department of Transportation who has oversight, and they have rules. And I appreciate that you guys have said that you've been talking to the city, and hopefully, we've got good, open communication, and that, that that will continue as we get into Segment A. I would love for the Department of Transportation to, you know, see maybe a little bit more light here and let us go in the area where we'd all prefer to be. So it's not, it's not Johnston that's saying, "We want to take out your trees," we really don't. We just don't want to build the waterway twice. And then as far as the other property, Mr. Doyle's property, what a beautiful segment of property, and it is so unfortunate that we have this infrastructure that has to go in there. But we, again, the engineer worked very hard to try and find an alignment that avoided a very sensitive water, not waterway, but wetlands area, and it had to go somewhere, and unfortunately, it's in the area that you just bought. But again, we, we really are going to try very hard to stay within those 10-foot, or 20-foot easement and the 40-foot easement, because we do put a, we put a high, high bar to our construction operations, saying that we value trees. So I just wanted to say that this is not about Segment A, this is about B and C, but I like what I hear, when I hear people, people call me, engineers call me, landscape architects call me, and tell me, yes, we know the city is trying. If we could work together and a united front to the Department of Transportation, maybe we'd be more successful. And not having more, made more of the fact that it was wooded areas when we made our application for a waiver, or whatever you would call it, maybe that was an oversight, and we can correct it. That's all I have to say, and thank you for coming.
Any other discussion?
I would just wholly endorse the comments that Councilperson Martin made, and very well said, and I, and both on the part of, of our efforts of trying to minimize tree impact, as well as appreciate the work that staff and our engineering partners are doing to, to, to be consistent with that and work towards that. I think as we, as you look at these different decisions, you have lots of factors, like, you know, the financial factor, the tree factor, and I think we, you know, I think as, as Councilperson Martin has said, the trees need to be as important in that process, and I think you guys know that very, very well, and appreciate your, your work on that to try to make that, accomplish that, that goal, both whether it be Mr. Doyle's situation or Mr. Oliver's situation.
Yeah, I appreciate that sentiment. One of the clarifications to Mayor Darren Field's point about the right-of-way, I mean, we try and stay within that as much as we can. We have had conversations with the DOT, they're the ones that said that we couldn't go down the 141 corridor because it'll be a Priority One corridor or an interstate designation, so that means we'd have to reconstruct a new water main that was put in, so that was some clarification around, around that.
But Matt, you're not opposed to continuing to ask for this waiver?
No.
And if, and if other environmental groups were to join on with the plea, that would only help our situation, would it not?
We, we can continue to ask the DOT, but they have the ultimate say.
If not, we have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Counselmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is Item 4C, to conduct a public hearing to an application for the State Revolving Fund, SRF loan, and to make available to the public the contents of an environmental information document and the city of Johnston's project plan for Johnson Northwest Area Water Main Expansion. And I just want to make a couple of additional comments before I open up the public hearing. This is something that is pretty unusual, I don't know that we've ever had a public hearing like this before. So just want to make sure that everyone understands that we're having this public hearing because we're required to as part of the State Revolving Phone, revolving fund loan process. The purpose of this hearing is to receive comment on the environmental information so that our staff then can take that information back to the DNR as they continue their further consideration. So, so the, again, the purpose tonight is just to receive that information and to, you know, so that staff can take that, that info, for that information to, to the DNR. Other than that, we don't, we will not be taking any action on this, other than just the receipt of the information, correct?
Right, and, and then we would need to sign the environmental document.
Does that take action on the part of the council?
No, it's just part of the...
Okay, so again...
We're just having, holding a public hearing to receive those comments. We will, we will collect those comments, respond, pass them to the DNR and respond to those public comments, and we can make that available to the public as well.
Right, so the council will just be listening to what that information is, and we'll pass it on.
Right.
Okay?
Mayor, if you, Matt, are we making, are we receiving comments on all segments? Are we only receiving comments on, or receiving comments on three segments?
A, B, and C.
Oh, A, B, and C, so it's the whole project?
So the purpose, again, is not to engage the council, but rather just, we, our, our role here tonight is just to receive the information.
Correct, receive public comment.
Okay. Again, this is something that is fairly uncommon for us, so I just want to make sure that everybody understood. Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing at 8:12.
And as stated, this is a requirement of the SRF funding that will be used to construct all phases, Segment A, B, and C of the water main extension to the northwest growth area that surrounds the Saverville Drive area. A series of environmental reviews are required and have been completed by FOTH. In order to finalize that process, a public hearing must be conducted to review the information and take public comments. The city has received some public comment to date, I believe those have been provided to the council. The environmental information document was prepared by the Iowa DNR, which documents the environmental reviews conducted for the project which was attached to tonight's board docs. The public hearing is required again, and once public comments are received, we would send those, as well as our responses, to the Iowa DNR as required, and then we can make those available to the public as well.
Very good. Is there anyone in the council, or in, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item?
Mayor, members of the council, Dan Manning again, 505 Fifth Avenue, Lilis Law Firm, representing the Oliver family. I think Councilperson Martin clarified an issue for me, and that is that this environmental information document applies to A, B, and C, segments A, B, and C. So there won't be, as I understand it, another environmental analysis done as to this particular project. Now, I think it might be helpful, and maybe you alluded to it, Mayor, and I want to make sure I'm clear about it, is the document that we're talking about, it was not prepared by city staff, it was prepared by the DNR.
Correct.
Okay, so what I would send back loud and clear is the failure to recognize the elephant in the room here, which is the trees that are affected by this particular project. There's no reference to them in any, in, in, in any point, and there are a number of trees affected both for Segment A and Segment B. As I understand it, I don't know that there are any trees involved in Segment C, because we're, it's exclusively within the right-of-way. So I feel obligated in that I need to be talking about Segment A, because Segment, we're not going to get an opportunity to talk about this again. The environmental analysis has to be done for the, the number of trees that are affected by the project as proposed by the city, at least as we understand it to this day. I know that you have construction plans for B and C, segments B and C. As I understand it, there are no construction plans for Exhibit A, or Section A. However, we have seen, you know, numerous preliminary drawings about the alignment and, that would significantly impact the, the Olivers' property, and in, from our perspective, needlessly so. What I would ask that the council do, and, and maybe the only thing I can ask is, do you keep an open mind, but you are a governmental body representing, you know, the citizens. Now, we're not technically citizens of Johnston, but I think you understand you're asserting a right to come across our property, and that you recognize the impact of that and the importance of, of that in terms of taking care of the citizenry, and that you don't just say, when the DOT tells you you can't do it, say, "Oh, my gosh, I guess we can't do it." There are rules, there, I've cited them repeatedly in our meetings with city staff, that there is a statute in place, there's a Iowa Supreme Court case directly on point, and that we take that message to the Iowa Department of Transportation, and to say that we look at it differently for Highway 415 than Highway 141. As we sit here today, there is no distinction between the two. What this, what the DOT would like to do, or might want to do, in changing the category of Highway 141 to a freeway, is something that's not before you. It's not something that you can decide upon, I, without recognizing that, I guess, an important component of this is, is there any evidence, any information that you can make available to the Olivers as to when you intend to proceed with Schedule A? That isn't something that we need to take to the Department of Natural Resources, but it is an important component. When do you plan to make this loop officially, one big loop? Because I think it's important that we understand that you have an opportunity to avoid an environmental challenge by following the statute and following the law, and not simply recognizing that the Iowa Department of Transportation, you know, they have standards they have to apply to. I've reviewed their rules and their regulations, and it's not as easy as simply saying, "Gosh, they'd prefer that we not put it in Highway 141." So I'm tying all of this together because the environmental analysis could be that we're, we're not going to touch a huge number of trees by putting it in, putting the alignment of the water main in the right-of-way, or we're going to put, we're going to have a huge impact on these trees, and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources needs to understand that. So I, I think I've beaten this issue to death, and I apologize, but I appreciate your professional way you've accepted my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this item? Is there anybody online, Cindy? Okay. Well, Mr. Manning and Olivers, thank you for being here tonight and sharing those, those concerns and those comments. We will make sure that we, we forward those to the Department of Natural Resources, and they become part of this bigger conversation. With that, we will close the public hearing at 8:20. And again, we don't, I mean, we're not, we don't have to take any action on this, correct? Other than, very good. We have completed the public hearings, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Counselmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Item 7A, non-consent agenda, consider approval of the third reading and to adopt and publish ordinance 1126, an official zoning map amendment for 1.77 acres from R2 Low Density Mixed Residential District to C2 Community Commercial District. Jacob?
We've had no comments or changes.
Counsel, any questions for Jacob? Come on, you can come up with a tough one. Not? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve third reading and to adopt and publish ordinance number 1126?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Counselmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, to receive and file the FY 2026 through 2030 Johnson five-year staffing plan. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second? I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't ask you to comment on this.
It's okay, we can go quick.
I'm on a roll.
I—I was just going to say that, you know, we've put this together over the last several months. The council did have a work session on November 18th to review this. We've made some pretty minor changes. All the positions remain. There was no changes in positions. But we also added the position kind of background and justification included in the overall staffing plan now. I would just reiterate, like I did during the work session, that this is really just a roadmap and a guide and helps us project—project future needs that we have here at the city. With that said, it is a living document, and certainly as we go through the budget process, like last year, if there are positions that we need to take out and amend based on budgetary constraints, we'll do that as staff. And so we'll use this as a guide. So we simply respectfully ask that the mayor and council review and discuss, and then, if not acceptable, receive and file the report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Mike?
I don't have a question. I guess from my standpoint, to me, if—I'm—I intend to vote for this. And from my perspective, by voting for it, my expectation is, is that we start the budget process with an intent to fulfill this staffing plan as much as possible. Otherwise, all the work we've done related to this five-year staffing plan is completely mute—moot. To receive and file something but not indicate that we at least use it as a starting point for the budget, to me, basis makes all of our planning processes kind of laughable. And so I—I just want to make sure, from my—my expectation is, I—I support this staffing plan. And I—my hope is, is that the HR Finance Committee will use this staffing plan as the starting point for putting its budget together. Now, that doesn't mean that they don't come back and say, "Boy, we—we tried really hard, and we did everything we could," just like I hope that we're able to do everything we can to convince the DOT to allow us to build this—this water main in—in the right-of-way. We'll talk about that maybe a little bit more later. But I—I—it's my hope that—that's where the—the HR Finance Committee starts out the process. That's my expectation by us, the discussions we've had in the work session and also this, is that that's the—that's the starting point. That's—and so I hope that's how it works. I don't want to just sort of file this thing and—and start at a de novo status when we get to the budget. And I think that we've really indicated an understanding that we need to invest in—in staff and—and try to make that process work. Now, again, if that produces consequences that we're not expecting, then we'll need to deal with that. But I—but—I want to stress from my perspective that my vote in favor of this tonight means that we're showing some level of commitment to this staffing plan, and we don't act when—as if when we get to the budget, like this is something that nobody's ever thought about or talked about, so.
And I don't necessarily want to speak for the members of the HR Finance Committee, but I think that that's exactly the—the sentiment that they share.
Good. Awesome.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke? Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C, resolution—consider resolution?
Yeah.
Consider resolution approving and authorizing execution of Amendment Number 7 to the Agreement for Private Development by and between the City of Johnson and Ignite Johnson LLC. Mike?
Mayor and council, this is the Seventh Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Johnson and Ignite Johnson LLC. Overall, this does really just move the minimum improvement deadline from its current date in November to March 21st, 2025. It makes some small tweaks to some other language in the Development Agreement. But otherwise, the Development Agreement itself remains unchanged. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has this evening on it.
Also, have any questions for Mike? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve Resolution approving and authorizing execution of Amendment Number 7?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I—I have wrestled with this discussion and this decision extending back to December 9th, I believe, when Mike Hoagie Weaver first met with the developers to make sure that he understood the city's position and what the decisions before us were, including considerations of calling default based on the previous amendments to the Development Agreement. As part of his discussions, and—and it's been shared through communications, both written and verbal, to the developers, the city is in need of some additional details as we continue to be a good partner in this development. I want to go on record as saying I really would like this development to come to fruition. And I think there are many up here, without putting words in their mouths, who—who would like the same. Otherwise, they would not be so thoughtfully considering their decisions in just a second to continue with a—a Seventh Amendment. I also understand that the Seventh Amendment, though, positions the city in a situation where we can continue to be a good partner, but we also can continue to act as good fiscal stewards to our residents and that we can continue to seek what's best for the Merle Hay Gateway, which is what we all ultimately want, is to be able to continue to have that area as well as our entire city thrive. So I—I will be voting in favor of this, but I want to express my deep frustration that requests for additional information by the developer have gone unmet to this point in time. And I ask any fellow council members to join me in being very adamant in making sure that we get all appropriate information, not only for ourselves, but certainly for city staff, that—that has been requested of them, that—that their requests not be taken lightly or not be blown off. And the next opportunity to be able to visit with those developers, I plan to make that known to them. And I ask the—your support in doing the same if you feel compelled to do so. Thanks, Mayor.
You know, I don't assume to speak for everyone sitting up here, but I think we all have that same—I know we all have that same expectation. Any other—any other discussion? Not—do we—we—we've already—already called for the motion. So if there isn't any further discussion, Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7E, consider approval of claims in the amount of $3,158,486.27.
Move approval?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Before we get into city administrator, city council comments, why don't we go back to the two items that we have remaining from the work session? The first one is to discuss the FY 2026 through FY 2030 Community Investment Program.
Going to try, David.
Cindy's working on—on bringing up the—the information. Staff has been working across multiple departments to put together the Community Investment Program for the next five-year period. We do have on the dais tonight a spreadsheet that's really meant to—to help as a guide to look at changes that have occurred in—the since last year's adopted CIP. There's detailed sheets in the staff report that have maps and additional information on each of these projects. But the way this document works, the columns on the—on the left, as you're looking at it, looking at it the right way in blue, are the adopted projects from 2024, the fiscal year 2024 CIP. The columns in purple on the right are proposed projects, and so they should line up. So a project should be similar on the left as it is on the right, and where it's not, we've tried to highlight those. There's a few projects that have been struck out just as not moving forward for various reasons. Projects that have been added are highlighted in yellow. And then, in a couple of categories, in three different categories, you'll see a number of projects highlighted in green. Those are East and Merle Hay Road projects. And so what Matt has done on those projects is tried to simplify the descriptions we had, like Phase 1A, Phase 1B. We've just went to projects, so they're a little bit—they're broken up a little bit differently and a little bit clearer. So these are the first—what you see in here are the first five years of those projects. They don't necessarily line up from the 2024 to the 2025, so we've highlighted those in green just to clarify that, so. With that, I'm going to stop. If there—tonight's discussion is really any discussion the council would like to have, and—and the other staff will be happy to talk about their new projects. Let's cover new projects. We've already talked at previous meetings about major changes to some of these projects. We've already talked about stormwater, so we don't need to rehash any of those. So really, probably, I would say the bulk of the focus would be on the projects highlighted in yellow, which are new this fiscal year. We are, as we work through the budget process, intending to bring this back as a public hearing for adoption. So this discussion is really to make sure you're all comfortable with the information that's in here. Cindy, if you could go to the staff report, or yeah. So there is an attachment. I—I noticed—I don't think the link is working, but the CIP budget book is the same as the link. It's the same information as the link. It's the second attachment there. What's that? It wasn't working for me a little bit ago. So this is—and these are all bookmarks, so you can sort down through years. Every project has a—has a link where it'll take you to the—the detailed information on those projects. So with that, I'll stop. If there's any questions for me, otherwise, I think Jeff and Matt are probably the two primary ones that can highlight any new projects that they have, which are those that are highlighted in yellow. Questions for me?
Can you tell us where the 86th Street Trail Bridge is—
Yes.
—where you're planning on putting that in?
Yes. So, Matt, I'll—I'll just turn it over to Matt, because he's had the most conversations with that one, so I don't misspeak. That's okay?
Yeah, the 86th Street Trail Bridge is the bridge that's just north of Valley Parkway, so it's north of 70th. It's a Polk County bridge. Polk County has reached out to us and asked if we want to participate in their project by adding a pedestrian bridge or pedestrian trail onto that bridge.
Okay, if you're at 70th and 86th—
Go north.
—and you go north, there's a terrible bridge on 86th Street.
Yep, it's a little white bridge.
And so the trail is assumed—there is assumed to be a trail bridge somewhere.
This—this would be, when they reconstruct that bridge, we would—our portion would be—
A trail adjacent, okay.
—along that bridge.
All right, that's about where I thought you would have it. Thank you.
Other questions, council?
I had one more. I'm sorry. I—I'm interested in the fence along Interstate 8035. It says it's adjacent to the Merle Hay Water Trail. I'm assuming it's on the south side of Beaver.
It is on the south side of Beaver Drive. It's a requirement by the DOT for us to place our water trail in there right-of-way. So that there's separation.
Right. So if you wade across the Beaver Creek, there's going to be a fence somewhere between there and the interstate.
Yeah, it'd be a chain-link fence, much like what you see on the south side of the interstate.
Does it require it to be five, six-foot tall, or four-foot tall, or?
I believe it is six feet. It's at least six feet tall.
Okay.
It may be taller than that, so we're working—working through that with the DOT. We're paying the portion that would run from essentially Merle Hay Bridge easterly to the Tressel Bridge, and then they would pick it up from there, and they've got quite a few fence projects along the interstate, but this is just our portion.
Okay, thanks. That's all I had.
Matt, don't—don't wander away. Could you, in maybe three sentences, talk about the stormwater project at Crosshaven that was added for 2030?
I believe that's underwater.
Oh, is it? Okay.
The yellow?
Oh, it is. I'm sorry. I read the top. Yes, it's underwater.
Yeah, that is a future project. We've got a series of homes that—that is just east of Hawkeye Estates, which is up near the 86th Street Bridge. So there's a few homes up there that actually get serviced through Hawkeye Estates and a private water meter. This would be to extend the water main to those. It's an unscheduled project. Not sure that it would happen, but currently it's unscheduled.
Okay.
I think it's listed in FY 2030 there, but we would look at that as—as we move forward.
And why is that described as Crosshaven?
It would eventually—I'm—
When I think of Crosshaven, I—that's—
It's—it's the neighborhood up-up that direction, that further to the—I'm not—did you change?
Yeah, I think the—the—the cell got cut off, and so there's a—Cindy's got it up there. It's a—
Oh, Valley—okay, there we go.
Yep.
Unscheduled water main from Valley Parkway, Northwoods, Crosshaven, so it eventually would—could continue up that way if needed. So it's—it's—it's just cut off. It's—it's unscheduled at this point in time. It's kind of a holdover from IP a year or two ago.
I guess that brings up a question I have. There's—yeah, there's some parcels up there, there's those sod farms, but there's some individual properties.
This is related to service. There's three homes.
Oh, it's just for the ones that are the Hawkeye State homes. The other ones don't need it.
That are south of Hawkeye Estates.
Okay. All right, never mind then. Thanks.
Since we're in that roughly part of town still, so I—I was—this bridge that we're talking about, the pedestrian on— so that's on 86th Street, and it's—it—it's where Little Beaver Creek crosses 86th Street.
Correct.
North of 70th. Okay, okay. Somebody described it as—what did you describe it as?
Well, it's a rickety little bridge.
Right, okay.
And it needs to be replaced, and—
Yeah, and I—I know that we just—I just went to a meeting with Polk County just a couple of weeks ago. They're looking at that. They may have to actually raise that bridge, so it'd be—it would get longer as well.
Great.
And may have to raise part of that road. So the project is still in its early stages, depending on what the costs are, if that project actually moves forward or not.
We used to, when our young—oldest child was young, very young, the only way you could get him to fall asleep was you had to drive him in the car, and we would go all over town. And I think that's the last time we would drive on that road, right? You would like go through—and I would—and like my wife would—I'd say, "Oh, I need to find a new route." Like, "Oh, let's go this way," right? And so then we would drive on that old bridge, but since—he's like in college now, right? So we haven't had that problem, so anyway, so.
Try those grumble strips. I—I think that wakes them up, right?
Yeah, exactly. So that's why we avoided it, yeah.
Any other questions for Matt? If not, we'll move on to Item 3C, which is beggars' night trick-or-treat date for 2025. Is that you, Mike?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and council. So the MAC recently conducted and asked our regional cities to conduct a study in their communities to assess a preference for beggar night and trick-or-treat dates. This survey was really intended to explore, you know, could we align? And I think there was a lot of discussion about, you know, is there a better date? And I think in particular, the—one of the comments was, "Hey, could we think about the Saturday before to accommodate some family schedules?" So we did go out. We conducted—Janet Wilmerding did a great job putting this together and kind of the—the feedback here, I think. I appreciate Janet's work on that. I received 1,270 responses. And overall, when you look at it, there—the one that stood out was to actually go to October 31st, both as a first preference, and then if—if there was a second preference, that also stood out. So lots of good comments. Overall, I mean, regionally now, I think MAC and—in a number of cities have seen a very similar survey results, and so a number of communities now that have traditionally held them on the 30th are also now looking to go to the 31st. And so really, at this point, just trying to gauge some opinions and support from the council as we work with them, the MAC group, to see what is the kind of consensus to go regionally. So with that, pause, see if there's questions, and have some discussion on it. So with that, pause, see if there's questions, and have some discussion on it.
Council, comments?
I'll go with the majority, it doesn't matter to me either.
I would say, and you know, the, the, I, I think of all the cities that did a survey, our numbers between the 31st and the Saturday were probably the closest. I mean, I, I would say that 40.24% and 37.95% is, might be within the margin of error. Now, granted, 1,200 responses is a lot of responses, probably more than we even get for our community survey. So I do, Janet and staff do deserve a lot of credit for, anytime you can do a survey and get that many responses, it was well worth doing the, the survey. You know, so, and I know some folks have heard from folks in the community who really liked the idea of Saturday, and you know, I, I, and in some ways, maybe moving to the 31st gives us an opportunity to, to at least demonstrate an openness to considering further changes. And obviously, I think Windsor Heights and Bondurant intend to stay on that Saturday. They're getting really positive feedback with that, too. So I, I'm, I'm certainly fine with moving it to the 31st. But if somebody feels really strongly about that Saturday as well, certainly open to listening to that viewpoint, too.
Other comments?
I, I just want to insert, I, I had heard from a resident, and I think what at least started the internal conversation amongst the city was to go to quality of life. And I think then it, it went further than that. And I, I actually am very appreciative that we solicited so much input. The resident that brought it to my attention was a big fan of the Saturday. But at the same point, they, they had every opportunity to weigh in on the survey like, like everyone else. And so I, I think that, you know, we can move forward with those that have a strong interest one way or the other on it. There is a part of me that says that there's a teacher in my house who always appreciates a non-school night for activities that involve sugar and running around the neighborhood. But that's just one position.
So when you say consensus, the metro, I mean, whatever the metro kind of decides on, that we'd all, we would go with it?
That's, that's what I would hope.
Yeah. I, I think that that would be advisable, too. Otherwise, like some, some people's children who might want to go from metro area to metro area to double up on their sugar, I'm not in favor of encouraging that.
Well, you'll still have the ability to go to Windsor Heights and Bondurant, so, because they will still be on Saturdays.
Oh, I see.
But, but again, I think, you know, I, I'm good with, certainly good with moving into the 31st.
I, I will be working with DART to make sure we get bus service to Windsor Heights and even all the way out to Bondurant on those Saturdays.
And I should have interjected, because I think it's an important point. You know, every community will make their own decisions. Right now, I know Ink, Kenny Clive, Des Moines, Urbendale, Waukegan, West Des Moines are all looking to move to the 31st. I think there's going to be a press release coming out, I'm not exactly sure how quickly. There's been some discussion, it may come out tomorrow. I know there's been some discussion of let's wait and make it a more comprehensive, like, and put other dates in, but that'll be for other people to decide from that perspective. But I just wanted to mention that for those communities.
Well, and I would just say, at this point, I think that's a conversation between the mayors to have. And, and so I'll, I'll leave it up to the, to our mayor to figure out if she would like to participate in that tomorrow or decide whenever, and, and we support however she wants to handle it.
So what happens tomorrow? I missed something here.
Well, tentatively, this is the date they've decided to send out the press release, so.
And have they just, have they decided to do that? Because I, I saw some of the email communication today, and it was.
It's not clear to anyone.
I think John Edwards has declared himself potentate of the world on this issue. So I would encourage you to maybe communicate with John, Mayor Edwards of Clive.
So here's, here's my question, then. If he's, if they're going to move forward with a press release tomorrow saying that the identified cities in the press release are, are going to set trick or treat as October 31st, do we want to be included in that list? In the press release tomorrow?
I'm good with that, and I think that's kind of consistent with Councilmember Martin's comments of trying to be uniform.
Are you okay? Councilman Moretti, are you okay with being included in the press release tomorrow saying that October 31st would be trick or treat night in Johnston? He's not on? Okay. Okay. I, no, I'm comfortable with that as well. I mean, if it doesn't, if, if at some future date we decide the 31st isn't the right night, we can change it again. It's not set in stone forever.
And the one, I know, kind of, you know, one thing that was a little bit of a learning experience, I think Pleasant Hill actually went to, had, there was like some sort of resolution or something that they had adopted establishing the 30th as their date. And so when it came, sort of this, you know, everybody was recognizing the weather was bad. They were kind of locked in a little bit. And I, so I think we should avoid, I think we should maintain as much flexibility as we can.
I agree.
And so I, you know, I think this is a good action, and I'm not sure we need to pass an ordinance establishing the 31st is, anyway.
Okay, so October 31st it is. And I'll give Mayor Edwards a call in the morning. So with that, we have completed our agenda items, with the exception of City Administrator City Council comments. Mike?
The only comment I'd make is a great season right now, it's budget season in City Hall, so. I'm wearing the Christmas tie.
Lots of morning, lots of morning meetings, yeah.
So I just want to appreciate staff's hard work on the budget, because it's a heavy lift, still ongoing, but also the HR finance ad hoc for the work they're doing right now. So thank you for that. That's all I have for tonight.
Councilman Evans?
Just wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
I want to thank the Public Works staff for their dedication in trying to figure out what could be potentially causing a water leak along Kings Row at Waybridge in, in Green Meadows West. They've worked very diligently on that. Went in, tried to figure out what was causing this leak, and the leak was happening during two weeks that might have been the cold, certainly the cold snap, early, first two cold snaps. So this water would come out and then instantly freeze and cause a lot of ice and stuff. Want to credit Matt and his team for working very diligently, and even bringing in some folks from Des Moines Water Works to figure out what could be, is this really a leak or not? And then, and really, obviously, then today, cutting some concrete and doing, doing their magic to hopefully resolve this issue. So just really wanted to share publicly my appreciation for their work in getting that done. Second of all, going back to the issue of Segment A and the routing of Segment A, since we appropriately really didn't talk as a council on that item, I, I would encourage us to, and I know we're in kind of a delicate dance with the Department of Transportation, but I would encourage us to push as hard as we can to the DOT to, to consider it right away. Understand appropriately that they have plans for 141, and I think that that is challenging. But I think this is an important opportunity for us to, to, to really demonstrate a true commitment to, I think, something that we really value in our community, which are, which is a stand of mature trees that would be impacted if we end up having to go onto this property. But I, and at the same time, I would encourage the folks who are in the room tonight, including the, the owners, to also reach out to the DOT. I don't, I'm not sure why they don't, they feel like they can only voice their opinion through the city. They have legal counsel, and I would encourage them to also engage their legal counsel to work, communicate directly to the DOT. The DOT serves them just as much as they work with us, as well as the other organizations that came forward to, to contact us. But I, I just, I, I hope that we can, you know, take as many steps as necessary to communicate to the DOT, that they keep an open mind on this as much as possible and, and consider an option. Obviously, we have a timetable, right? So we can't keep, you know, can't keep it open forever. But I think we encourage them as much as possible. And I appreciate, Matt, your, your acknowledgement of that, and as well as others you might be working with on this project.
And maybe just to make a comment on that. We've had, we've had a lot of conversations with the DOT on this specific issue, and we've made all the arguments. We've made a lot of arguments. And we've, we've gotten a response from the DOT, and I, we, we can continue to have those conversations. But at this point, I, I'm, I'm not convinced that there's anything more we can say that will change their mind.
I, I agree, and I completely understand and respect that, and, and, and share that perspective, right? And I think unfortunately, tonight really wasn't an opportunity for us to probably full-throatedly, because I know we've talked about it in, in this area, that when we talked previously about this, boy, if we, if the DOT right away was an option, I hope we can pursue that option, right? And so I just want to make sure that, you know, that we, that we, and even to the extent if we, if we, you know, if we feel comfortable sending a letter to the DOT, that we can at least show to other folks that, hey, look, we have pushed on this as hard as we can. I just think it's helpful for us to demonstrate that as much as possible. I know we're very effective and I think very good communicators, sort of behind the scenes. But I think on this one, it, it may be worth us going a little bit more public in, in that position. Obviously, understanding and respecting the partnership, but, I mean, and I, I don't think that, I don't think that that gets us so crossways with the Department of Transportation on this, that, I just think that we, we need to demonstrate, to the extent we can, not only the work we've done so far, but that we continue to, to, to push on this, with an understanding certainly that the likelihood, that the DOT's position is, is also understandable. And, but.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it was acknowledged, that those conversations have taken place and.
Absolutely.
Has been made and.
Right. But tonight's forum didn't really allow for that. And so I just wanted to take an op, it didn't, right? It just didn't. Didn't, tonight's was not an op, we were kind of encouraged not to engage in comments with the, with the folks. I, I think that's fair. So I just wanted to say, I think as much as we can, I think we need to do that.
Councilman Burkhart?
I, I, and I know this is going to be a blanket statement for many different projects and activities, but I offer my sincerest thanks to our city staff for all that you do to keep us informed and apprised of what's going on on targeted and specific projects. But, but moreover, trying to look out a ways to head off things or to make sure that we're prepared as we come through things, that they're not surprises on our timeline. And I know that's rather generic and rather abstract, but I'm grateful. And, and I hope that as we narrow down a timeline of looking ahead, I hope all of you have a very wonderful and hopefully even minorly restful holiday season. To everyone, happy holidays, whether it be Merry Christmas, or Happy Hanukkah, or certainly even Happy Kwanzaa. And if you don't celebrate any of those, enjoy the cold, it's going to come whether we want it or not. But I'm grateful to work with each one of you, and I wish you all well, too, and safe travels if you're heading anywhere. With that, I yield.
Thanks. I just. Matt, thanks for all, all you guys do on our streets. And I'm praying that you guys have a nice, mild Christmas and New Year's with no ice storms and no snow. I used to plow snow for Bob Lunt's landscaping, and it was always a bummer if it landed on a holiday. So that's what I'm hoping for.
And I will just, I'll be brief, but I did make a comment at the conclusion of our last city council meeting that I had received an invitation to attend an international conference in Kosovo. And I did, did spend last week in Kosovo. I took off on Saturday, or Sunday morning, or Sunday at noon and got back Friday evening. I just want to share that the experience was very, very worthwhile. It was an incredible opportunity to engage with others from throughout the world, including the panel of mayors that actually was invited to, to us, to speak with on, on the topic of city diplomacy. The conference itself, really, the focus of it was to talk about, was for Kosovo to talk about how to deal with issues involving their diaspora. And that's a term that I wasn't real familiar with until I actually attended this conference, even though I'd heard, heard the term many times before. But it, it's essentially that population that they see that, that, that leave Kosovo to go to other places, either because of work opportunities or, or educational opportunities, similar to Iowa's brain, brain drain that we have. And so, you know, the purpose of the, the conference was to figure out, okay, how, how can we stay connected with this population? What can we do to, to encourage our young people to stay, stay in Kosovo or to return to Kosovo at some later date? Or at least minimally, make investments back into their home country so that, you know, so that they can continue to grow as a country? So the one thing that I will share is that I'd never been in Kosovo before during the holiday season. And so I was curious to see what they, they did during, during our holiday season. And even though the population is 95% Muslim, because that's, they're, they're secular Muslim. They were, they were a Christian nation up until the Ottoman Empire moved in and took over and forced them all to become Muslim. And so I, I was curious to see what, what they did. And they actually have adopted most of the traditions that we have in the United States in terms of, you know, Christmas trees and tree lighting and, and, and American Christmas songs. And so it felt, you know, it felt very comfortable being there, even though that, you know, they, that, that's not their, their religion. So that was, that was interesting and, and fun for me. So, anyway, I did have the opportunity to, and it was a surprise to me, but I did have the opportunity to spend 30 minutes with the Prime Minister on the first full day that I was there. It was, it was a, a day that he, by, by midnight of that day, he was required under their law to submit his list of candidates for the national election coming up in February. And so he was still scrambling, trying to identify the 110 members of his party whose names he was going to submit by the end of the day. And he took 30 minutes out of his day to spend with, with, with me talking about the relationships that we have here in Iowa with the Kosovo people. So that was, that was pretty special. So, anyway, I'd be happy to talk more with any of you about that at any time, because it's, it truly is an incredible relationship that we have with the newest democracy in the world. So, anyway, is there anything else to come before the, for the body tonight?
I've got a quick couple of comments. Just updates on the Green Meadows West sidewalk program. We did send notifications out for those folks that have not responded or did opt into the city. We are required by code to send that out if we have a potential to assess a property. So those went out, some of them went out Friday, some of them went out Monday. So if you receive any comments, just feel free to direct them to Public Works. I know that we've had some folks that have fixed sidewalks, but they still have some gaps to fill in. So I know that we've heard some comments that, you know, we fixed sidewalks, but we're going back out and marking those at, at request. So that's one item. The second item is, if you didn't stay out late enough tonight, please join us tomorrow for 100th Street. We're having our public meeting on the 100th Street, north of 70th tomorrow. So that's from 5:30 to 6:30, so you'll get home a little earlier. So, that's all I've got.
Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.